All right, so for this follow-up video, I am going to go ahead and pretty much focus on the old exam questions. So granted, I have them up now. I have them without the key. So this is your kind of last, last chance to not see them or not hear me go over them, because that was the majority of what was in the questions I didn't answer. The only other thing people asked for was to go over valence bond theory. And actually, I'm going to cheat a little bit and show off again the fact that there are in the 701 section, pre-recorded lecture videos from 2020. And these actually have, there's chapter seven, and there's a video on hybridization, and there's a whole video of me doing valence bond theory. So I know some folks would basically just like to see everything again and hear it all again. And this video is about seven minutes long. So if you're interested in valence bond theory, what I would recommend you do is go ahead and go to the pre-recorded lecture videos folder from the course homepage in 701, because that also has everything in it. So that way you guys can basically look at and see whatever you would like, a whole bunch of different things from previous years, previous semesters. So that's what I'm going to recommend on that one. So therefore, I'm basically on old exam questions with a couple of highlights, especially for percent yield, which will be below. So considering the following line angle formula, how many pi bonds are present? So since we are looking for pi bonds, this is that part where a single bond has no pi bonds, a double bond has one pi bond, and a triple bond has two pi bonds. So for pi bonds, we're just looking for double bonds. So I've got one double bond, two double bonds, and three double bonds. And that's it. So I think the trickiest part really of this one is just in that line angle formula, you've got to be able to recognize where the double bonds are. And this one in between the sulfur and the oxygen is not as obvious, but it is there. So this is again a part where if it's easier for you to go ahead and rewrite the structure, so it's a little bit easier to see that there's a double bond in between the sulfur and the oxygen, that's an option that you've got. What are the ideal, number two, what are the ideal bond angles in IBR3? So they've given you the structure here. So one of the other questions that I was asked about was like, how to think about molecular geometries? So here, so I've got my central atom. My central atom is this I right here. So then around it, I've got two lone pairs, and then I have one, two, three bonds. So as far as this is concerned, this is five electron domains, which gets me four electron domain geometry would get me trigonal bipyramides. But it has two lone pairs. So therefore, this is T-shaped. And that then becomes the crux of this problem, because when we talk about bond angles, when we talk about bond angles, and that's what we're being asked for, then we have to have bonds. It's the angle between bonds. And the reason why I say it like that is not the lone pairs. It's the angle between bonds, not the lone pairs. So the reason why this is important, when we go to look at what this shape looks like, granted, I'm going to draw this two ways. So first of all, usually when I draw these, here's my iodine, and then I should have two bromines in axial positions, and one bromine in an equatorial position. I have two more lone pairs. They're both in equatorial positions. So, and I'm just caring about ideal bond angles. So even though these should squish down a little bit because of the lone pairs, I don't actually have to draw that. But if you'll look at it, this is actually in the plane. So what I have here is I have a 90-degree bond angle here. And for simplicity's sake, I'm going to scribble it on this side, 180-degree bond angle here. And that's actually all that I have. I know there are folks that are like, but what about the 120? Show me, y'all. Show me where the 120 is. Because I think the thing you'd like to do is you'd like to tell me that there's 120 degrees in between the lone pairs. But we do not count the lone pairs in bond angles. So bond angles, you do not count the lone pairs. They don't count. So that 120 doesn't exist. Again, I could have a 120 technically between the lone pair and this bromine, but it doesn't count either, because it involves the lone pair. So the only thing I get to count are the bonds. And the only thing that's left are two axial positions and one equatorial. That's all 180 and 90, and that's all that's there. So that is how that one works. Bond angles have to be in between bonds, have to be in between bonds. Number four, methanol can be produced industrially by using high pressure to carry out the following reaction. So going to point out the fact that there's a two right here, which means this is balanced. So my general rule for y'all is that if there is a coefficient that's not one, then you can trust it, and therefore, the whole thing is balanced. If there's no coefficient there, you have to check everything. Got to check all the things and see if it's balanced. So it says calculate the percent yields, so that I know what's going on. Of methanol, if four moles of methanol are obtained from a reaction, so I get four moles of this from a reaction of nine moles of H2, nine moles, and an excess of carbon monoxide. So one of the things that that tells me is whenever it says excess, this basically means I get to ignore it. Can ignore. So I have an excess. I can just ignore that carbon monoxide. I have so much carbon monoxide that I just, I definitely have enough. I don't really care about it. So it's there, but I don't care about the carbon monoxide. So whenever we talk about percent yields, so if you're doing percent yield, the percent yield is the actual divided by the theoretical, and these are yields, times 100%. So one of the odd things with this is when we say theoretical yield, this is usually what you calculate. What you should get. The actual yields is reality. Now, the thing is, percent yield is great in a lab, where you do the experiment. So you weigh out, and you measure out, and you figure out from the experiment that you do with your own hands, what the actual yield is. You measure it. The thing is, is that in a lecture set, and then the theoretical yield is the one that you calculate oftentimes in a pre-lab, or but then in post-lab, like, okay, you weighed out this many reactants. What were you supposed to get? Take a ratio of the two. Actual yields always goes on the top, because typically, your actual yields is smaller than your theoretical yield. Usually, your reaction does not go to completion, and you don't have as much as you expected. So usually, this is a number less than 100%. But in a lecture class, in an exam question, we have to have different ways of telling you what the actual yield is. So in this case, it's, there's only one product, and it just says, if four moles of methanol are obtained. So this part where it says, if four moles of methanol are obtained, that part is, it's supposed to be the actual yields. I know that because it asks me for percent yields. There's two numbers involved in it, and percent yield is also all about the products. So when I say, so when it says percent yield, that has to be about the products. It has to be. So in this case, they gave me one number for my product. The one number they gave me has to be the actual yield, because it also says, tell me if that was the amount that you got. And then it says the reaction of nine moles of H2. So I need to calculate the theoretical yields from this information. So I have scribbled a little too much on my problem. There we go. So I have nine moles of H2. Hold on, let me just. Really like to do is just move this down a little bit. There we go. So now I've got a little bit more space. There we go. So I have nine moles of H2, and I'm going to use my balanced chemical reaction. I have two moles of H2 for every one mole of, that's methanol, CH3OH. So my theoretical yield is 4.5 moles. And again, I know that because I need two numbers from the products. So this is theoretical, because it's also assuming that I used up all my reactant. All reactant used perfectly. So that's the other thing that's happening here in this assumption. It's assuming all my reactant is used absolutely perfectly. So now I can go ahead and make my ratio. So my actual yield is from the problem. That's the four moles. My theoretical is the one I calculated. That's 4.5 moles. And then I get to multiply this by 100%. Sorry, it's supposed to be 4.5. So four divided by 4.5, times 100, I get something like 88.89%. So usually theoretically yields, so other ways that this problem can look. So as you might imagine, this thing that's highlighted in green has a lot of different ways we can say that, because that's the actual yield. So usually, these problems do have a lot of different wording, especially again for the part where we're trying to tell you what the actual yield is. So sometimes we could just say, like, actual yield is blank. Usually, though, we don't, it's not super normal. Usually, we don't just tell you that that's the actual yield. Usually, it's more like you do an experiment and produce or weigh out so many grams of final products. So a more common way to do actual yield is to describe the experiment so that you know what was going on. So that is typically, that's a more common or typical way to talk about actual yield. I know the person who asked this question wanted some more examples of this. As you might imagine, this can also be in grams. And really, what I would encourage you to do for this one is check those end of chapter questions to see what else, how else these could be worded, because a lot of times, that's what the tricky part is. Is how is this worded? Where do I get my information from? But one other thing to note in here, and part of the way of this problem solving goes, again, I know I've scribbled all over it. So I'm going to actually erase all of this, because this is being recorded, which means if you want all of my lovely scribbles, you can just back the video up. So they're not gone. They're just earlier in the video. So one of the other ways to break this down is, again, so first of all, it does ask you for percent yields. So therefore, I know I need an actual number for a product, and I need a theoretical product. And it's going to be the same product. There's only one product. They gave me one number for this, and then they give me another number, but this other number is for my H2. So one of the other ways to break this down is to take a look at what things do you have in the formula? What things do you have in the chemical equation? And then figure out what you need to do from there. So that nine moles is of a reactant. And I don't need reactants for theoretical yields. I need products for theoretical yield. So whenever we're doing percent yield, percent yield is all about the products, all about the products. So any information you have about reactants, you're probably going to use it, but you're going to use it to go ahead and get to the products. Oh, so I asked for intermolecular forces. Sorry, I'll explain. I thought this was going to be a limiting reactant problem. Don't know why I thought that. So this is, I have to draw the Lewis structure. So this is seven plus three times seven. I should grab a periodic table to show you guys. There we go. So here's chlorine and fluorine, both in group 7A. So they are going to have seven valence electrons each. So that's going to get me a grand total of 28 electrons. I'm going to come back, because I know it's intermolecular forces, but I need some room to draw. So my chlorine goes in the middle, fluorines, we'll just put them over here for right now. No atom left behind, so I bonded three of those together. That's six electrons for bonding. That's 22 electrons left over. Two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18. Gives me four left over. Hey, it's also T-shaped. Five electron domains. And yeah, five electron domains, two lone pairs. This whole thing is T-shaped. So for something that's T-shaped, this one is going to be polar. So one of the things that we talked about in the review, oh dear. There it is. That's what I wanted. So either T, no matter which T-shaped it is, you've got lone pairs that are not going to cancel out. You have lone pairs that are only so far apart from each other that they are not balanced. So those, so T-shaped, no matter which T-shaped it is, is going to be polar. There's going to be more electron density where those lone pairs are that are just not balanced out. So granted, we could have the conversation about which way does the dipole moment go, since there's fluorines. And honestly, I don't know. It's probably not very polar. But we are going to assume that this is a polar molecule, because I've got lone pairs that don't cancel. So this is going to be polar. But there's no hydrogens. So there's no hydrogen bonding. But it's got electrons, so there are dispersion forces. There are London dispersion forces. Everything has those. So since everything has London dispersion forces, I have to pick London dispersion forces, because everything has those. What you might even notice is that they are actually in every single answer choice here. So that didn't actually help me. That's okay. Then the other thing to keep in mind is, oh, these are actually pretty good answer choices. I was going to say, if it had hydrogen bonding, it would have to have dipole-dipole. So anything that just has number four in it is also wrong. But that's not here either. So instead, the thing I'm looking for is dipole-dipole interactions, and we do have that. And so there's three, and it's B. So I mentioned limiting reactant. So what I'm actually going to do is I'm going to cheat a little bit, because I did not actually come prepared for limiting reactant. I saw somebody in the chat that wanted it. So the first, actually, the first thing I want to do is I want to double-check is, did it give you guys a limiting reactant video in the chapter eight stuff? Yes, great. So there is a limiting reactant video hanging out in those old videos. But let's go ahead and do one example of limiting reactant. So I'm going to change this question. And when I change this question, I'm going to keep my nine moles of H2, but all I'm going to do is I'm going to say, I'm going to speak in just a minute, how much product can be produced from nine moles of H2? And let's just do nine moles. Yeah, don't overthink it. Just pick one. Eight moles. Ten moles. Yeah, eight moles of carbon monoxide. So there are three main different ways to calculate limiting reactant. There are. So I actually asked my class to go ahead and watch some videos to brush up on the way that they did it in high school, so that they could remember that. But here we are, and I have to pick a way. So I'm going to pick the way that I think most people are most comfortable doing limiting reactant. That's the way I'm going to pick today. I'm also picking this way, because this question asks how much product can be produced. So I'm also going to pick the way that solves for product. I'm also going to do this in moles. Forgot to put that in the question. Product can be produced in moles, because that's also just going to save me a little bit of time. And honestly, even if it was not in moles now, in moles is how you analyze that. So we do actually analyze, or actually, as long as it's the same unit, you can analyze it in grams or moles, but you have to analyze the same unit, especially when you're doing the same product. Okay, so I have nine moles of H2. So what I'm going to do is I'm basically going to compare my two reactants, H2 versus carbon monoxide. So I have nine moles of H2. And when I take my nine moles of H2, it takes two moles of H2 to make one mole of methanol. So that makes 4.5 moles of methanol. So that's my hydrogen. But then what I want to do now is I need to compare. So there was my hydrogen. Now I need to compare my carbon monoxide. Well, I have eight moles of carbon monoxide, which is fewer moles. But then for every one mole of carbon monoxide, I get one mole of methanol. So if I could use all of my carbon monoxide, I would actually make eight moles of methanol. So here's the part where we get to compare. What you should notice is both of these are now methanol. But one of them assumes that I used up all of my hydrogen successfully. And the other one assumes I used up all of my carbon monoxide successfully. The thing is, since I have two different numbers for my reactants, I don't necessarily have enough to react both of those. So the two numbers of methanol over here on the right, one of these is wrong. And the bigger number is wrong. So basically, I don't have enough to make my eight moles. So the smaller number, the smaller amount produced is correct. Because what's happening here is basically asking, like, all right, if I could use all of my hydrogen, how much could I make? If I could use all of my carbon monoxide, how much could I make? The other thing that this usually goes with is some sort of baking analogy. So if I want to make a cake, or if I want to make cookies, and I have like four eggs, but then I have like 50 cups of flour. I know that's a little bit ridiculous, but bear with me. Realize that I'm going to run out of the eggs first. So I could tell you how many cakes I could possibly make with the 50 cups of flour, but I would have to go to the grocery store at some point, because I'm going to run out of eggs. I won't have enough to use up all 50 cups of flour. That's what's happening in my carbon monoxide. Theoretically, if I could use all the carbon monoxide, I'd get eight moles of methanol. But I'm going to run out of hydrogen before that ever happens, because according to the hydrogen, I can only make 4.5 moles of carbon monoxide. So one of the ways we ask for limiting reactant is to just say, hey, you have two different numbers for the reactants. So you've got one number for each reactant, but tell me how much is actually produced. And that's how we do this particular problem. In limiting reactant, you can just also be asked for limiting reactant, in which case, this same method works just fine. But then you're being asked for the reactant that has limited what is happening, which would be your H2. So those are the two most popular ones. The other thing that you can be asked for is excess reactant. So we'll make ourselves a little list here. So you can be asked for products produced, which is what we just did. You can also be asked for the limiting reactant, and you can also be asked for excess reactant. I've got to admit, it just kind of depends on, so I'm going to stick with the method that I started with. So I am not going to start this problem over again. But from what we did, we figured out product produced. That was the 4.5, and we figured out the limiting reactant. That was H2. The excess reactant, this is asking you, after you use, after you use your carbon monoxide, how much CO remains? And this one, we can also figure out. So what we need to do for this one is we started with eight in the problem. So we have eight moles of carbon monoxide. All we need to do is subtract the moles of carbon monoxide that are used. So this is the number I'm looking for. I don't have it right now, but I would like to subtract the number of moles that are used to get the moles of carbon monoxide that remain or is in excess. So that's the goal. And then I would have my answer, and we would all be happy. So what we're going to do then is, since we know that hydrogen is limiting, we're actually going to go back to the problem and ask ourselves, how much carbon monoxide did we use? Well, I had my nine moles of H2, my nine moles of hydrogen. And I know from the problem that I used two hydrogens for every one carbon monoxide. So I used 4.5 moles of carbon monoxide. Now, I know for this problem that we keep getting the 4.5 again, but that's just because we only have, we've got the same ratio between our reactant and our products here. So the only thing that's different is the H2. So I used all nine moles of the hydrogen, but I'm also going to use 4.5 moles of the carbon monoxide. So then when I can come down here and say I used 4.5 moles of carbon monoxide, eight minus 4.5 is 3.5, and that's our final answer for excess. Now, because there are different ways to do limiting reactant, you can calculate excess reactant from whatever you calculated to get limiting reactant. It just depends on where you started from. So one of the things that I would encourage you to do for limiting reactant is to focus on the method that you like the best, and then get help from people so that you can use your method. One thing that often happens is y'all talk to each other, which is good. It's great. But then you wind up trying to mush a lot of different methods altogether. And that usually is kind of confusing. So just be aware, there are three different methods to do limiting reactant. And since a lot of y'all have learned how to do this. And since a lot of y'all have learned how to do this in high school, it really wouldn't matter if everyone in the teaching team taught it the exact same way, because you guys come in with stuff from high school. So hopefully, this helps. So we did some limiting reactant. We did four different problems off of the old exam, and we talked a little bit about some limiting reactant and percent yields stuff. So hopefully, that helps out. Have a good day, everybody, and good luck.